Which means that per our charter, she can still vote, but joining us via video, Vice Chair Rachel Ann Elrod. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Could Dr. Sharika Robey Grant please join, uh, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to begin our evening, though, with some words and recognitions. We have some of our stellar students, members of the Ambassador Group of Antioch High School with us. Dr. Battle, would you like to welcome them?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome up our Director of our Academies of Nashville, Jennifer, if you can come on up and introduce our speakers for tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you all. Happy Tuesday evening, I do believe, prior to Thanksgiving holiday. We've got some awesome Antioch bears here with us this evening. So I, without further ado, I will invite them up to share with you a little bit about their experience in the Academies of Nashville. Ladies.
Good evening. My name is Alexia Moby. I am a senior at Antioch High School. I reside under the Tennessee Teachers Credit Unit of Business and Finance, and I'm also under the pathway of accounting. Antioch has offered me numerous opportunities over the past four years of my high school career. Due to COVID, things have been straining on my academy and pathway, but I've still been fortunate to experience a lot of opportunities. One of the ones in particular that I was really fortunate to experience was an internship this past summer with Opportunity Now and that Youth Employment Initiative with the Mayor's Office. I was able to work as a clinical intern this past summer at Mahari Medical College, and that exposed me to a lot of post-secondary opportunities, as I do plan on pursuing a career in the medical field. So I was really fortunate to have experienced that. And overall, amidst the pandemic, Antioch High School has done a really good job of just keeping us informed and in the know about, you know, things in regards to our academics and our mental and emotional state as well. I've also been fortunate enough to be a part of the International Baccalaureate Program at Antioch. It's very rigorous, and we have a very unique and diverse cohort, and I really appreciate that these past two years that I've been in it. And just overall, the diversity that Antioch offers us. Each academy and pathway is very different, and it's geared to our personal needs and future aspirations. So I've just been really thankful for the inclusivity as well these past four years that has been offered at Antioch. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julio Jamal, and I'm a senior at Antioch High School. My academy is the Academy of Hospitality and Marketing, and I am in the pathway of culinary. We have a lot of opportunities within all the pathways at Antioch, but in my personal pathway, we have an OSHA certification, which will allow you to work into an, in kitchen, in a kitchen. And another opportunity I've had while I was, while at Antioch was dual enrollment with Tennessee State University. I was able to do coding with that, with one of the professors at Tennessee State. And the class I did was coding, and basically, well, the objective of that whole class was to, at the end of the year, be able to build an app. And so at the end of the year, everyone was able to, everyone in the class has created an app based off what they learned throughout that whole year. And the thing I love most about Antioch, obviously, is the diversity and how much everybody just has a different story, everybody has a different background, and just learning about new things about everyone is just a very great opportunity, I feel like, to blend in with everyone.
All right. If we can have the team from Antioch High School, our ambassadors, before you leave, y'all could come on up and take a picture with us. We appreciate you coming tonight and sharing your experiences with us. If we can get a quick photo with the team.
Right up here. Hold on. I'm up to the stage.
We appreciate having you here to just tell, tell us about your story, your journey through MNPS. We'll now move on to our director's report. Dr. Battle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. Before we get into our presentation on the Personalized Student Dashboard, I wanted to first start out by recognizing some of our team members for going above and beyond to serve the district in the last couple of weeks. First, I just want to acknowledge that on Friday, November 12th, we had an extraordinarily large number of drivers called out for various reasons, which resulted in significant logistical challenges in making sure all students were picked up and dropped off safely. Going into that Friday, we deployed as many strategies as possible to improve attendance and support our transportation needs, including offering an extra attendance bonus and working with a local charter school bus transportation company to help improve operations. I can't speak highly enough of our drivers, our monitors, and other transportation staff who worked last Friday so hard to ensure our students were picked up. We heard through transportation so many drivers offering to switch buses and routes or to pick up any kids who needed transportation, working from the early morning to after, late into the afternoon. This extends to those team members at school who stayed later to ensure their students were picked up and were supervised. Let me share one story in particular. There was one bus driver across the district who stepped up in response to this need. I'm thinking of one who, after completing her route, picked up another route to support her colleagues. As it started to get dark, dispatch was concerned because she had not returned to the transportation hub. We later learned from the driver that she dropped off students at their doors as opposed to their stops because it had gotten so dark that evening. And so needless to say, I was touched and impressed by the collective effort to get the job done. The team going above and beyond to make sure that our students not only made it home, but they made it home safely. So thank you to our Transportation Department leaders for all that you do for our students on a daily basis. Next, I want to give a quick shout out to our reset team here at the Support Hub that went out to one of our middle schools to allow administrators and teachers to plan around setting the right conditions for teaching and learning and SEO supports. Support Hub members spent the day at the school so that teachers could focus on adult self-care and reset planning for their individual classrooms. Outcomes for reset were to create a space for teachers and administrators to collaborate and plan for the second semester towards a school culture reset and to engage and work around mindsets and stakeholder voice. Community partners from across Nashville dedicated time, talent, and expertise in support of engaging with students and staff. This is just one innovative example of our Support Hub modeling what we're all about. Kudos to the team of leaders who participated. And finally, I wanted to recognize our security team who acted quickly to render aid to someone who had experienced a medical emergency here at the Support Hub. They gave the Support Hub even greater meaning when they rushed in to give a person CPR while awaiting for EMS, likely keeping the person alive while the ambulance arrived. Again, thank you to the entire department for your tireless efforts to keep everyone safe. These are the types of act supports and all-around engaging with our students, our families, our stakeholders to make sure needs are met on a daily basis. So thank you to Team MNPS and for all that you do, I think is timely, to give them a shout out of thanks as we move into the holiday season. For tonight's report, we're going to focus in on the Personalized Student Dashboard, currently in Phase 1 of development, which is a critical component to our 14 signature initiatives and core tenants, as this is where parents will be able to see progress students are making on their focused outcomes in the areas of literacy, numeracy, social-emotional learning, and transitions. Earlier this year, we were able to overcome the initial challenge of making this data accessible to families. And then throughout this school year, we have been working at the district and school level to ensure families know about this strategy and toolkits being made available to them, and to increase access to our goal of full coverage for all students. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Paul Changis, our Executive Officer of Research Assessments and Evaluations, who is going to go through that process and highlight our successes and discuss next steps for moving forward with Phase 2 of our Personalized Student Dashboard. Dr. Changis?
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As, as I've said before, this initiative is closely tied to Core Tenant 3, which is to create and support engaging, rigorous, and personalized learning experiences for all of our students. We also anticipate that it will help us to eliminate, identify and eliminate inequities in our families as we provide all of our families the opportunity to have access to on-demand, timely academic and non-academic data that we think is critical. So as Dr. Battle mentioned, this is aligned with all of our focused outcomes. We have MAP literacy and numeracy scores. We have TEN Ready literacy and numeracy scores. We have academic information with regard to grades as well. We have attendance and behavior data that's, that's tied to our social-emotional learning. And then we have data that helps us identify the academic performance of students to help with those transitions from tier to tier. We also know from the research literature that when our students are involved in, in ownership of their data and setting goals, when we have timely and effective feedback, that it has a positive impact on academic performance. It also helps empower our students, and it helps us accomplish our goal of every student being known. We want to engage families in this process. So I'm going to walk us through kind of the, the steps that have occurred this year and where we are now. The first step was simply to identify a platform for providing timely information online, on-demand to families. And one of the things we heard consistently from our stakeholders is, to the degree possible, let's put all the information in one place. We don't need multiple platforms. The fact is, we already had a student information center with a parent portal. About a quarter of our families were accessing it before. So that's, that was our starting point. However, the data was, was limited in what was available previously. We had grades in there, we had attendance information, but we didn't have test scores, we didn't have behavior data. We had the start of an academic plan at the high school level, but there were gaps there. There were some issues that we needed to address. And I want to thank our information technology team that's been working on, on filling those gaps, but also helping my team load assessment data from our district, from our state assessments, and getting behavior data from our student information system into the portal and, and available to, to, to all of our schools. So in May of this year, we implemented this first phase of this dashboard, which was to put that assessment and behavior data in there. We, we were up to date, to the degree possible, with the data that we had at that time. We've continued to add the data that was, that, that's in that site. We started with MAP assessment for the last couple of years, WIDA access data, our English proficiency information, ACT scores going back as long as students have, have taken the ACT. Since, since May, we added TEN Ready scores and, of course, exam scores from the state assessment, and we'll continue to, to add additional assessment information. This fall, a lot of our efforts have been around making families aware of how to access the site and the information that's there. I want to thank our Communications Department, our supervisory and support executive directors, and particularly our schools for the effort to make families aware. This was done through a variety of, of approaches. On our website, we provided content specific to accessing the site, utilizing the site. We have videos on how to do so. In multiple languages, we provided content. There was a social media blitz. There were letters and flyers distributed directly to, to families. And schools in recent months have been contacting families directly, helping them walk through the process. Our information technology team, our programmers, also created a report that made acts, there's a, a very long code that's required for each guardian or parent or guardian to have access to the site, to, to create an account. Those were not readily available previously, but we put that in a format, thanks to our programming team, to, to make that something that could be distributed much more easily. And then we've been gathering feedback via survey, through our Parent Advisory Council to give us, give us comments on what you see in, in, in the current Phase 1 that we have, but also what additional components would you like to see as we go forward. We had a survey that, we had over 100 responses to, responding to specific report examples. We had screenshots from our site that, that we got feedback on, and I'll, I'll share a little bit of that in a moment. And the process now is developing visualizations. One of the limitations we have using an existing portal is, this is, this is from a national vendor, we can't just go in and make changes that we would like immediately. So we're working on a, a new phase to, to provide a new platform, probably through our data warehouse, to, to provide on-demand reports that would be available to families that also we would likely generate after, maybe after each benchmark assessment, that would have longitudinal data and enhanced visualizations. The, the visualizations currently available are limited to table format. So that's, that's where we're headed. Based on the feedback we received from families, we all, we got the comments about the, the visualizations, the graphics. We'd like to see trend lines, we'd like to see more color, color coding if things are moving in the right or wrong direction. Assessments organized by subject. Currently, there's, they're in a list format, somewhat organized, but it would be a, a lot nicer to see them with, with regard to trend lines for each subject. And we plan to do that for longitudinal data, but also projecting ahead to what a target would be for that child to be, be on the right path for success. We do have interpretive information that's, that's currently in the portal, in our student dashboard, particularly with respect to our assessment data. We know that interpreting test scores is not the easiest thing for families. It's not always easy for educators to interpret some of these exams. So we, we put content in there, but we, we know that we need to continue to build on that and to enhance that. But we also need to have those conversations between parents and teachers on a regular basis, and we believe this dashboard will help facilitate those conversations. We also got feedback requesting more detailed reporting on grades. We also had feedback regarding more detailed reporting on attendance and behavior, but actually, we have the ability to drill down for, for the attendance and, and behavior data. Using screenshots in the survey didn't show that, but if you go on, onsite, you can actually drill down and see when a student was absent, you can see whether it was an excused or unexcused absence. If there's a behavior incident, you can see what the discipline outcome was. And then finally, we, we had feedback asking for staff contact information. Who do I contact if I have concerns about grades, about test scores? And there's some information that's in there, but we would hope that parents, guardians have someone at the school that they're comfortable reaching out to, but that's an area we can also address. We also plan, as we go forward, to provide additional resources for, for families. As I've mentioned before, if I'm having a problem with, with an ACT exam, if I'm not happy with my performance, what are, what are resources I, I can go to to help hopefully better prepare in the future? So where are we with regard to access? Well, after multiple years of being around 25%, in the past couple of months, we have moved up to over half of our students now have one or more guardians that have access to this dashboard, and that's happened thanks to the, the work of our families and our schools. It hasn't necessarily been easy, but the more attractive we can make this by putting more information in there, the better. I can tell you that we currently have 37 schools that have topped 60% or more of their students having a, a parent or guardian with access. That number's changing every day. We had three more that were added just since yesterday, and we'll continue to build on those numbers. So who are those schools? I'm not going to read the entire list unless Dr. Battle wants me to. This is the first of two slides, but I am going to pause here for a second to give people a chance to recognize these schools. Again, there's been a lot of effort that's gone into this process. You can see we have schools at every tier that are involved in, in this. So we want to celebrate the work that they've done to, to get above 60%. So those are our 37 schools. We have several more that are right on the cusp. I mean, we're talking about one or two families away from, from getting there, and we'll continue to build on that. I've known Dr. Battle long enough to know that 60% is probably not going to be the, the target for her. We're going to continue to build on this. So finally, the next steps, based on the feedback that we've received from our families and will, and are continuing to receive, and from our students, I had the pleasure of talking to the, our two student board members today a little bit about, about the student dashboard and getting some feedback. But we're in the process of developing, I mentioned that we want a more comprehensive report with enhanced visualizations, something that can be eventually available with, with just a click on our dashboard to a family. What that might mean is an email that, right now, that's sent to my department, and we send them the report, hopefully electronically, if, if they're able. But by the end of this school year, we'll have a report that has longitudinal data for our various assessments, for our behavior, for our attendance. And it, we, we are going to convene families and some, we have volunteers from our Parent Advisory Council who have, I've met with previously, and I hope to get more family members to, to be part of those focus groups, to look at some potential visualizations based on our expertise, but also the feedback we've received. Here, here are two or three different ways we might show MAP assessment scores. Here are two or three different ways we might show behavior data or attendance data, and get their feedback and, and fine-tune that so that that report can be available later this year. We also want educators to be part of that process, and obviously, some of my team and some of our others here at the Support Hub have been involved in this process, but we want teachers and counselors to, to also provide more feedback. So that'll be happening, starting in January, those focus groups. We'll finalize the report after we get the feedback and, and again, but before the end of this school year, make that available. We'll continue to work with, through our Communications Department, through our Executive Directors, and through our schools to communicate to parents the, the resources that are available, both in terms of interpreting the data, using the data, having conversations around those, those student performance measures with the school. And, and, you know, the, the data's the starting point. It's what we do with it that matters. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Changis, for their report. And I know we highlighted those 37 schools that are over 60%. Just kudos to the entire team, Dr. Changis and his team, Dr. Bellamy and his team, and all of our school teams for their work, because the majority of our schools are over 50%. We just had a pretty aggressive goal by this date. We wanted to be, as a district, over 60%. So that's what we reported out tonight, but lots of great work happening, engagement and connection with families so that we can get the feedback. And it's important to get our families and students and, and staff members and stakeholders all in there so that we can help improve the, the dashboard together. But for just a moment, I want to ask our two student board members, Ebeneze and Abigail to, excuse me, Angelie, to, I was just looking at you, to take about 30 seconds. They had an opportunity to connect with Dr. Changis and his team, just any reflections or comments that you all would like to share briefly about the Personalized Student Dashboard.
So I've had the pleasure of working with Infinite Campus or using it for, I think, ever since I was in middle school. And a lot of the, the points that were made today are problems that are, or issues that I've seen throughout my middle school career and also my high school career. And it's a lot of things that my, my friends have also mentioned, like, for example, seeing our TEN Ready scores or our MAP scores, or even ACT, which is something that I'm worried about right now as a junior. I think it's wonderful to see that. And the fact that we're also trying to incorporate our parents into this, because I know that, you know, as an immigrant, I have parents that have difficulties with electronics, especially with something that is mainly just numbers and data can be confusing. So asking the question of how can we make this data easy to be interpreted by parents is also, I think, wonderful, and that's, that's basically, all I have to say is, very good job. Thank you.
Go ahead, boy.
I would like to say that Infinite Campus has always been easy for me to navigate personally. I wasn't even aware of the changes that we've made as a district until I talked to Dr. Changis around an hour and a half ago. To have parents exposed to this information that is to benefit their own students is something that we must work towards as a district, and that has to be implemented through every school. Having parents be on the same page as their students and knowing where they are, not just academically, but also ACT scores, behavior, attendance is an important thing. So thank you for all the work that you're doing, and I can't wait to see where this is going.
All right. Thank you so much.
Dr. Battle, you'd have been better off just letting them do the presentation.
Well, it's always good to get their feedback, and thank you all for taking the time to dig in and to share your thoughts. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Any discussion before we move on to governance issues? Go ahead, Mrs. Tyler.
Yeah, I have a question. So when you were last in the hot seat with the PAC a few months ago, one of the things we talked about was the student dashboard. And one of the questions and the things that we discussed about trying to add to the dashboard was the possibility of not just showing static data or accumulating data like grades, but also showing potential. So for example, based on a student's grades, what classes would they be eligible to take that are advanced academics that they may not have considered if they didn't know that that was a possibility? And that was something that you said you guys were looking into. I didn't really see anything that addressed that, but I may have missed it. I just really, and then, of course, just now, at the last PAC meeting, we talked about, you know, how do students access honors classes? And this could also be another tool that would show families and students, hey, you are eligible for this, you definitely should check this out. Anything that, that allows our students to know what their options are right off the bat, I think, is beneficial, and it provides a little bit more of a two-way tool as opposed to just data. So I didn't know if that's something you guys have worked on or...
So I'll just, I'll say, it's been in the discussion stage at this point, and it's primarily as we talk about the resources that we want to make available to families. My, my primary focus thus far has been primarily on getting the data out there, working on enhancing the platform and the visualizations, but we have started the, I mean, I, I've got a team of data coaches that, that work in schools, and we've had conversations around how do we make this actionable? And, and that include, for the, for the kinds of conversations that you're talking about, there's not going to be necessarily a simple how-to guide, but we have to facilitate the conversations between the school and the family. So that's the part that, that we're working on in terms of protocols and so forth. But we can put resources that, that maybe we can tie somewhat to the data, but more than anything, making families aware of what the possibilities are is probably where, where we're going to start in that, in that process. But it's, it's part of, it's, I don't know that that's going to happen in Phase 2 this school year. I think that's probably a Phase 3 for the coming year. But those conversations should be happening, and, and we're just hoping to facilitate those.
Well, I, I think it's great that the conversations are happening. I want to encourage you guys to continue to look at that. I think it would bring another level of value to the dashboard. I think it would bring another level of value to the dashboard that's more than just checking in, that makes it, provide some information that may not have been accessible otherwise as opposed to, you know, grades could be accessible every nine weeks, or eventually you get your ACT score in the mail, or what, you know. But something like which classes are you eligible for, and how do I know how to look for something bigger than what I'm used to? That doesn't come in the mail. That's not something that tends to show up at your front door. So any way we can facilitate that conversation for our families to know is beneficial.
And I will say that the interpretive information that we have on test scores are provided through links to our district website. There are things that we can start doing sooner rather than later in terms of providing links to the curricular supports that we have that were referenced in today's Town Hall, for instance. Those kinds of things can be put in there. Customizing it for the child around the data is a little more complicated, but we can at least expose them to the possibilities and encourage those conversations. I hope that we'll get to the point in the near future where the data will drive more specifically what those opportunities are.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Little.
I just see on here, next steps, convene family focus groups. Just in my little interaction with parents in District Four, a lot of them are not familiar with it. And so when are you guys looking at timeline? Not specifically, but kind of is it next quarter, second quarter?
We're going to start in January. I'm probably looking at January and February. And we welcome, we'll be putting information out on our website in terms of how to sign up, but we'll probably be doing both a combination of survey and focus groups depending on the turnout.
And that's actually a continuation, because there have been some surveys and some specific parent groups who've provided feedback that has advised what you see in this particular presentation.
Right. And now the feedback will be around, here are some specific examples based on what we've heard so far, and get their response to those.
All right. We will now move on to governance issues. We have a consent, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Battle and team.
Can I make a quick recommendation or a motion? Since we have so many parents in here and we are running out of seats, is it possible that we address this agenda item, the charter school amendments and renewal first to give the parents a time to listen, give feedback, and then get their kids home?
Well, the consent agenda is short, so we should be within about five minutes. So thank you, though. All right. We do already have one request to have Consent Item 1B1 Education Direction pulled for Mrs. Tyler. Any other amendments to this agenda? All right. All in favor in passing this?
I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Unanimous. We'll now move on to 1-1. Mrs. Tyler.
Yes. So I see that this contract is for the provision of independent school turnaround services at Jerry Baxter as part of the State of Tennessee School Turnaround Pilot Program. Can you guys just clarify what that is? What is that pilot program?
Absolutely. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Carrie Randolph, Chief of Strategy, to respond to your question, Ms. Tyler.
Sure. So there was some legislation passed that established the turnaround pilot program. TDOE then, through that legislation, identified a school. And MMPS, other districts are involved as well. So Jerry Baxter was identified as our district. They then ran a procurement process to identify potential vendors. It was not our process, it was theirs. They presented those vendors to us with a timeline to identify the one to work with that school. And so we ran a two-step process involving school stakeholders as well as others, and this particular vendor that you have before you tonight was selected.
Are they focusing on literacy? Are they focusing on math? Is there, are there definite benchmarks that we're supposed to meet based on this?
What you see before you, there's a little more detail. I mean, they receive quarterly payments, so we will be granted the money to pay for the service. But the plan is developed in partnership with the school and community. So it is, the purpose is to exit priority status, as you see there, but there were no additional benchmarks given other than the timeline to secure the vendor and begin the partnership with them.
And I assume that we're, you know, going to be meticulous about exactly what they're doing so that if they do exit priority status, then we have some sort of a roadmap for other schools that might be on that same...
Right. So, great question. The way I can address that question really is through selection. That was a real focus of our selection, not the roadmap, but exactly how they would engage, how the plan would work with the school and that community to be a real value add and not a distraction.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Little.
Go ahead, Ms. Masters.
I just, I wanted to clarify that the source of funding is one of these, is this, this is one of these ESTR fund, but competitive grant, is the state? No?
No, sorry. Keep going, you can keep, no, just kidding.
Where do we get this money, is what I'm asking?
The legislation established the funding is state-level funds.
So we didn't, we didn't apply specifically for this. It was, but it is the state funds that are, okay.
All right. Mr. Little.
I'll just be frank. I say all money is in good money. When I tried to look up education direction, couldn't find anything about them, couldn't see anything they do with turnaround work. And when I looked at it, it was for $125 a year for four years, and then if the school came off of priority status, it was another $500,000. I would love, before we vote for something like this, and it's no disrespect to the school that would get it, but I think it'd be a big misuse of funds, although it's state money, before we know more about this program, who they are, and what experience they really have. And for this to be on the agenda, I asked around, and no one knew anything about it. So I would prefer we slow down before agreeing to something that I myself know nothing about.
Well, and I'll kick it back to Dr. Randolph in just a second. This is a part of the new legislation from the state. We don't have the choice not to move forward, and we're up against their deadline for moving forward. So our empowerment in this process was to go through the selection process based upon who was provided to us to leverage and to be in compliance with the legislation. So, Dr. Randolph, anything you would like to add?
That was exactly accurate.
And I get it. And maybe, and I don't want us to break state law, but I also don't want to give a million dollars to someone who is not going to do a good job with our kids and be around our kids. And so state law is state law, and we're local, and I don't know our deadline, but I would love to pump the brakes on this so we can do some, if anybody knows anything more about this, I would love to talk about it in private, but I haven't heard anyone who knows anything about this process. And my last question is, when is the deadline that we would have to approve it?
Well, you can go ahead to answer that question. The, okay, well, as you all are coming up to answer about timeline and deadline, I would like to offer this other perspective. I remember being a classroom teacher. I would have been so sad or frustrated if you withheld $125,000 from being added to our budget or being added to our school when this is money that's not coming out of our budget. You know, it's not money that we're having to take from any other school or that we're pulling from anything else. This is literally state funding that we won't have if we don't accept a vendor. So I certainly understand the wanting to do background research, but go ahead with the timeline if you don't mind.
I would just remind the board that we cannot, the board cannot discuss things in private on action items that are before the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, I mean, this was highly discussed during the session, and so it is something that, I mean, it is our responsibility to keep abreast of these bills that are coming forward and what's past. We were paying close attention to this throughout the process because we knew it would likely have an impact on our school district. It is then our responsibility with what's provided to us and with those requirements that we do as much due diligence as we can in the selection process and just being aware of the process that the team went through. I can attest to that, but we could only respond to those who were provided to us as options for the support for the particular middle school.
And respectfully, I think, for clarity, we followed the state process. The process I didn't follow, and maybe that's on me, was the RFP for the vendors. And so when I see Education Direction LLC, and they have no information online, they have no record, I just say, what's our deadline before we have to make a decision, because I don't think we should make it today.
And I think, I think they saw we're clarifying, there's a different process. Dr. Randolph, could you explain the process again?
The way the legislation established this particular program, they ran the procurement process. We did not run the procurement process, so it was not our RFP. They then delivered vendors to us to choose from that were selected through their own procurement process.
All right, Dr. Gentry.
MMPS, right.
Dr. Gentry.
Is this the company that's based out of Kentucky? Is it based out of Louisville, Kentucky?
They're based out of Salt Lake City and Greensboro in North Carolina, I believe. I believe. I think they've done work in other places, but their basis, I believe, but it's possible.
All right.
The way we...
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is Tyler.
Yeah. I think it seems like the evaluation is in here as well. So it's, we're evaluating them based on the quality of services provided and the success in helping. Now, how frequently does that evaluation happen? And at what point, if we decide that it's not working, like Mr. Little's worried about, and that it's not doing what we said it is, I'm sure that there's a clause in the contract that would allow us to break that because they're not meeting their needs. Is that not correct?
Based on, it's a quarterly evaluation based on those payments that you see there, the $125.
And then, as the board, we have the ability to ask for those to come before us if we want to see the, those, if we're truly concerned about something, then we can always ask for those evaluations when they come to you guys to also come before us.
Dr. Battle?
Dr. Randolph, I'll let you respond, and then I'll add to.
Yeah, I mean, we will absolutely do those evaluations are part of the contract.
Yeah, two quick things. Just from advocacy on MMPS's part, we've been watching this. We knew it was coming. We advocated on behalf of MMPS, actually specifically with school, would be included. At the end of the day, it is, we're required to be a part of this pilot, being selected. So that's the first thing. The second thing, as a part of this committee team, there is board representation on the committee. I believe it falls in Ms. Masters' district, so she will be a part of those conversations and can support additional board conversations as we move forward. But I do want to highlight that part of our advocacy on behalf of MMPS was that we've put some very intentional strategies in place at the particular school, so we want to make sure that we're following things closely, because we all know when you start doing a whole bunch of different things, it's kind of hard to put your finger on what's going to get us to this level of success we know we will see. And so we're being very mindful about that because we were proactively already intentionally embedding some strategies to help with the school improvement plan.
And I just, can I just also say, like, kind of for the record, I don't have any problem about giving what amounts to a bonus if somebody does what they're supposed to do. I feel like in some cases in education, in the education world, things can be bought, curriculum, you know, tutoring programs, other things, and there's not really incentive to make sure that they're actually working properly. It's just once you sell them, you sell them, and then you've got to deal with it. So I don't have a problem saying we can offer you a bonus if you do what you're supposed to do. That gives them an incentive to work harder and do what they're supposed to do. So, I mean, for me, that's not part of the problem. I just didn't know much about it and wanted to know more.
Yeah. I think part of that distance is it being more of a state initiative that we're a part of, as Dr. Randolph described.
My last question is, when is the deadline before we approve it, or do we even have a deadline?
I believe it's November 30th.
Okay.
So we do have a deadline, November 30th. All things that we do strategically run alongside that, those deadlines. So November 30th will be the deadline. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Oh, can I?
Go ahead, Ms. Masters.
I just, since Jerry Baxter is in my district, I just wanted to speak to this for a moment in that, you know, I will take state money almost any way I can get it. I will throw that out there. But also, I'm very appreciative of Mr. Little's desire for that oversight. It is, it's very exciting for me, knowing the population within that school and that community, and knowing the level of excitement of the current administration there to really, you know, dig in and work really hard to do the best that they can for these students, to know that this type of investment is coming into play. So I just sort of wanted to assure Mr. Little that should we determine that we're comfortable going ahead and passing this tonight, that I will gladly, you know, be in contact with the school and the community members. I can also send you some information on, the company was founded in 2007. It's grown rapidly since taking on a whole lot more of these sort of federal-level funding contracts. I didn't see any red flags just from my short bit of research, but I'd be really happy to report back, even down to like the parent and student level, about what this is looking like within the school.
And just working in the school, just for clarity, this is going to Education Direction, which is going to support Jerry Baxter, but that was my only question. If I don't know who they are, what they do, even though they're going to be in the school and they have no real experience, it's not worth the million just to say we gave them a million.
I would say they definitely have demonstrable experience based on the research that I've done and a more than, more than a decade of work. But, you know, there's also always the subjective side.
All right. Do we have a motion on the floor? Or can I get a motion one way or the other to accept this vendor, Education Direction LLC, or not?
I move that we accept this vendor, Education Direction LLC, to the benefit of Jerry Baxter Middle School in District Three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second for Mrs. Tyler. Further discussion, all hands in the air for those supporting it. All right. All opposed? One opposed, no objections. All right. We will move on then to naming of New Hillwood High School location. Mrs. Elrod?
Good evening. All right. So first, we have a vote, and the vote will be, I will make the motion, to recognize the historical significance of Dr. James Lawson. Can I have a second?
Please raise your hand. Do we have discussion?
Sorry, went through committee.
As I say, we discussed during committee, unless we have any discussion.
I'll make a quick comment.
Go right ahead, Mrs. Player Peters.
We had to have a kind of abbreviated discussion during committee because we were up against a hard timeline, but I just do want to acknowledge that, you know, we did hear from the community that the significance of Bellevue High School and the significance it does have to the community, we as committees decide to do James Lawson High School, but I do just want, just want to let the, you know, we didn't have a chance to really, to really kind of acknowledge to all the names to make sure we got our business done that we had to do with governance. But I do want to acknowledge the significance in the history of Bellevue High School, and even though we're moving forward in this direction, does not diminish at any part of the legacy of Bellevue High School, what it meant to the community, what it meant to those who graduated. And I just wanted to make acknowledgement of that because we just didn't have time to say that during the committee part. So ready to vote?
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. James Lawson High School. All right. No opposed? Anything else, Mrs. Elrod, around the naming of schools?
Actually, the first motion that I just made was on our policy, states that I have to make two motions. The first motion is just us as a board recognizing the historical significance of James Lawson to make sure that he is worthy of this name. And then the second, so that was that motion. Okay. The second motion is to vote on the name, James Lawson, for the new high school that is being built in southwest Davidson County. Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor to ratify, please raise your hand. James Lawson High School. All right. Unanimous. Thank you, Mrs. Elrod. Anything else, or does that close us out? Dr. Sevier or Mrs. Elrod?
That closes us out. I appreciate everyone's attendance this afternoon, or most everyone's ever attended this afternoon, and of course, Ms. Tyler's advocacy on the progress of it for not just the past weeks, but several months. And I look forward to this beacon of a high school that we're being built, not just in Nashville, but for the state, being named after Dr. Lawson as he is an architect of Nashville Civil Rights Movement, and I think it's really important. Thank you.
All right. All right. We will now move on to charter school amendments and renewals. Dr. Battle?
At this time, I would invite up Dr. Tariq Robi Grant to lead us through our charter amendments and renewals. amendments and renewals.
Good evening. My name is Sharika Robey Grant, the Director of Charter Schools for MMPS. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Director Battle, thank you for the opportunity to share the charter office review team's reports on six charter applications. This evening, we will present the amendment applications for Rocketship Northeast, Purpose Prep, Smithson Craighead, and Strive Collegiate. We will also present the renewal applications for Lead Prep Southeast and Knowledge Middle School. We will first review the charter amendment requests. Three charter amendments requested the addition of fifth grade, Rocketship Northeast, Purpose Prep, and Smithson Craighead. Purpose Prep and Smithson Craighead also requested to increase their enrollment cap, and Strive is requesting the removal of fifth grade. Lead Prep Southeast and Knowledge Middle School are both seeking renewal of their current charter contract. The Office of Charter School leads the authorization process by sharing evidence findings for new applications, renewal applications, and amendments to existing contracts. TCA states, "The governing body of a charter school may petition its authorizer to amend its charter agreement. The authorizer must rule on the amendment application within 60 days of its due date." The Board. The Board has the following options for the amendment applications. Approve the amendment in whole, which will approve the addition of fifth grade and increase enrollment, and no additional action is needed. The Board has the option to approve the amendment in part, expansion to fifth grade only, without increased enrollment. The Board has the option to deny the amendment in whole, with no expansion of fifth grade and no increased enrollment. If denied, a charter school has the option to appeal the decision. Per Tennessee Department of Education rubric, if the school's application for an amendment addresses the following categories, it is an indication of a strong response. The application should include the following: academic results that indicate compelling support for the proposed amendment, a budget that is realistic and explains the financial impact of the proposed amendment, a facility plan that is realistic and accommodates the proposed amendment, and evidence of support from parents, staff, and community partners. We will begin this evening with Rocketship Northeast. Rocketship Northeast is requesting the addition of fifth grade. The current grade levels are kindergarten through fourth, and the amendment request is to add grade five. The chart highlights an overall summary of findings for the amendment request for Rocketship Northeast. Rocketship Northeast was a reward school in 2018, 2019. Rocketship Northeast exceeded the financial standard from school years 2015 to 2019 on the charter school performance framework. The current building at Rocketship is equipped for the additional grade level, and stakeholders provided feedback regarding the amendment request. The review team determined that the application for the amendment to add fifth grade to Rocketship Northeast meets the standard. I will turn it over to the Board for the discussion and vote for the amendment request for Rocketship Northeast.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Sharika Robey Grant and Dr. Battle. Do we have a motion regarding Rocketship Northeast's amendment?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment for Rocketship.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. All right, discussion? Mrs. Free to Player Peters?
I just want to make kind of a general statement before we go to each one while we have the full audience here. When I met with the parents regarding these schools, regarding the fifth grade, I want to make a comment about the inference about the MMPS role with expansion of fifth grade. There was an inference that we determined the calendar, which it happened. Charter school operators have their own board that determines the operator. We're kind of like a mortgage lender or a lease. We hold the lease, we hold the title to the house. But how you maintain the house, when you schedule maintenance on the house, or when you have the car, what you decorate the car with, when you put the gas, is all in the governance of that school's board. And there was a confusion with some of the parents that we dictate when fifth grade would happen. Well, fifth grade happens with the application, like we're going through this process. But when we approved to expand fifth grade for MMPS schools, we did it when our Director of Schools presented to us in a timeline, and that because of that decision we made with MMPS schools, it should automatically go to, to the charter schools. And I wanted to clarify that at any given time, when the charter, and this charter school had their charter, had school, their board could decide when fifth grade could be expanded and when they present it to us. We only can approve it when it's presented to us. So I want to make a clarification of what we govern and what we are obligated by state law to govern the schools within MMPS, and then what charters and their boards do. So I wanted to clarify that kind of civics aspect of it, because I've, because when I was having some discussions, parents were confused of who had the ability and when we can do the ability. Yes, the ultimate approval is with us, but your board has, has the ability in their strategic planning when they can have fifth grade. Fifth grade could have been done before we even decided as a school district to do it. It's like a previous administration decided to withdraw it from our middle schools a decade ago, whenever that happened, and we worked it in. That could happen. So I want to clarify that, that we just authorize the title or the charter itself. And then if you want to make certain amendments, that's up to your board when to bring it off, to make amendments to it. But we don't decide willy-nilly when it happened. When we make, and it's, so when there's a talk about a partnership, that partnership cannot be one-way. That, the only partnership that happens is when we do something, and then a partnership is expected. So I just want to clarify that, just for the parents of what our fiduciary responsibility is and what your school's operator board fiduciary responsibilities, because there's two different fiduciary responsibilities. Our fiduciary responsibility is to approve when you make amendments to grades and enrollment caps, but then at that point, this fiduciary responsibility relies on your board. And so I just want to clarify that, because that was a little frustrating for me, that there was an inference made that we dictate if and when, at any given point in time, we can do that. It has to go through a process. But you're, you have a board that operates the, the day-to-day operations that doesn't act in tandem with us. Like when the teacher's got a raise, your, your teacher's getting a raise. Or when we went $15 an hour, or when we do certain things, charter schools do not have to follow suit that we do, and choose sometimes not to. They do whatever's best for them. And that's different, I know one parent brought up, well, when school, when we decide to have two-hour delay or close schools, that's a partnership. That's not a partnership. It was decided amongst your school, they operate, it was easier to follow our lead with that. So someone doesn't have to get up three o'clock in the morning to see if there's a school, a road iced up in Jolton or in Donaldson. So I just want to clarify that before we get into discussions, to each individual thing about whose fiduciary responsibility falls where. Because I think that was a confusion that I had when I met with the parents. That was innocent, but, and somehow, in the, in the, in the explanation of how the system works, that part was lost. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Anyone else? All right, no more discussion?
Elrod has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, go right ahead, go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
I don't know if you can see me on the screen or not. I apologize. I guess to take a jumping point off of what Ms. Player Peters said, I agree with that. Also, you know, we, charter schools have a lot of leniency with the different ways that they operate and organize their schools. And this is one of the few benefits that we can have as well for our schools. And in good faith, I cannot, I, it would be, my constituents would be very upset if they were not getting the option for fifth grade and other schools were before them, that were not inside the cluster model that they've been waiting patiently on.
Mr. Little, please repeat your motion.
I make a motion to approve Rocketship's addition to their charter amendment.
All right, and I seconded. All in favor of accept, of accepting the amendment for Rocketship Northeast, please raise your hand. All right, that's four, all opposed? That's three? All right, motion, motion fails. All right, we need a new motion on the floor? For Rocketship Northeast, their amendment. If we don't pass something, if we don't pass a motion, it is automatically accepted December 1st.
I make a motion that we deny the addition of fifth grade to Rocketship.
All right, do we have a second? All right, we have a second. Any more discussion? Right ahead, Mr. Little.
This is, this is really confusing, and I, and I appreciate the civics lesson, but MMPS as a whole has 81,000 to 85,000 kids. And so when we talk about what a charter school board does and what our board does, I think it's important to note that we do follow, we gotta, we gotta work with schools. This is, I don't know. So let me say this, I think when you have a lot of families who have a choice, and they have a clear choice, whether it's a traditional school, whether it's a magnet school, or whether it's a public charter school, they have a choice, and it's, and it's up to them. And I think it is, it is hurtful to listen to one parent say, yep, like, we want fifth grade back, we even want the sixth grade back, and not listen to another family because they have a different brand. And so I think what we're, what we're doing up here, again, like, we're sending the wrong message to our families to say, we're going to change how we do elementary, middle schools, and, but we're not going to allow charter schools. I, I guess what Ms. Player said, you would think that if they wanted to do it within their board, and they voted for it, they should just be able to do it. But the process says they have to come before our board, and we have to vote on it. And I think because of that, just because we're granting them the amendment, doesn't mean parents are going to attend the school. And so all I ask and why I supported the amendment, because it gives parents the right to choose without big brother dictating, like, we have an issue with the state. Like, we get mad at the state for the things that they're passing down, and we throw a big funk, and then we come in here as a local board, and we do the same thing to a smaller board. I think we just got to watch what we're doing and the message that we're sending, and we have to keep equality and equity within our Metro Nashville Public Schools.
All right, Mrs. Elrod? I'm sorry, Dr. Battle, did your team?
The board members can speak first.
All right, we'll have Mrs. Elrod, then we'll go back to Mrs. Player Peters. Go right.
Thank you. First of all, I think it's worth noting that, I guess, kind of like the analogy that Ms. Player Peters shared, these are charter school students, not necessarily our students. They are ours as we pay for them, but they are, you're interrupting. Additionally, they do have the right to choose.
I certainly understand, thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me. We do appreciate you being here, but please respect the process of the board meeting. We appreciate you being here, thank you again. Go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
Additionally, the choice was made to leave an MMPS school and to go inside of a charter school. That is a choice. But that choice requires you to have an understanding of, there's different responsibilities and rules, there's different calendars, and they have their own governance structures. And so if you choose that, you are in essence saying, I'm choosing this and not this, not both.
Parents, we do appreciate you being here and your passion and your advocacy, but please continue to respect the protocol here. Please feel free to email us. Many of us have met with charter school parents. So please, and we will continue to have the conversation here. I just ask that you all remain quiet throughout the rest of this process, so that the board members can not only speak, but then we can cast votes. Go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
So, if you are making a choice between those decisions, you know, your, your choice is to go in one direction or into the other. Again, MMPS is allowed to have finally some flexibility in some areas. That does not necessarily mean that the charter schools get it, just like when the charter schools get flexibility, we don't get that either. Additionally, we don't need.
Christian. Call for the vote again, so we can not only wrap this up. Oh, that's right.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
We would ask for a brief, short statement to just clarify on what grounds the denial is being made, if that is the motion before the board.
Yeah, so. Okay. Dr. Gentry, did you?
No, no, no. So I just, I just want to kind of do a little Robin's rules here, that we can make a motion to reconsider. Just remember that. That you can make a motion to, to reconsider.
The only thing is, do you have a December 1st deadline? We don't have another meeting?
I didn't say defer, I said reconsider. So it can be a vote. His, his motion can come back to the table.
So, and what I will say, if you would like to, or we need to close the loop on this motion, and then we can reconsider another. Now, what I will say is, I've met with charter parents also, in fact, I regularly do. I do believe that fifth grade, I mean, I was a middle school teacher, I believe fifth grade, it's a best practice for it to be in elementary schools. I also understand that Reimagine Ed was developed to make sure that we are focused on equity, so we had specific pathways. Stradford clusters, of the Stradford cluster, the White's Creek cluster, the Maplewood cluster, the Pearl Cone cluster would be included, and I believe these are in, in those clusters. I will say, though, that I, I believe that fifth grade should be back in a school, or in elementary schools, but I don't agree with increasing enrollment. And considering that Rocketship isn't adding enrollment to their school, I will support it. Now, we have to go through each process, or each school's process differently. With that, Mrs. Elrod will go ahead and call for the vote. Could you restate your motion?
My motion was to deny fifth grade to be added to Rocketship.
Yes, I'm sorry, if you don't mind adding the denial, the basis of the denial.
Oh, the basis of denial is that the additional seats are not necessary nor needed.
There aren't any new seats, but we have Metro League coming.
I was going to say, for clarity, I don't believe this amendment is to request additional seats.
So. How I put this one sentence? My motion is that we deny fifth grade being added to Rocketship in order to stay within our, to prioritize our reimagined MMPS schools.
All right, and we have a second. All in favor of denying Rocketship Northeast, please raise your hand. Well, all, the motion fails, so now we can reconsider a motion.
I want to launch a motion just to reconsider our previous amendment to support Rocketship Northeast on the fifth grade addition.
All right, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, all opposed? All right, motion passes. But I do want to reiterate, again, parents, we do appreciate you being here at any point, but please be respectful of the conversation and the process. We'll be here after the meeting. If you would like to speak, please continue to reach out to us also outside of the meeting. With that, we'll kick it back, back over to Dr. Battle and her team.
Thank you, Dr. Sharika Robey Grant, you may proceed.
We will now review the amendment request for Purpose Prep. Purpose Prep is requesting to add fifth grade and increase their enrollment cap. The current grade levels are kindergarten through fourth. The amendment request is to add grade five. The current enrollment cap is 360 students. The amendment request is to increase the enrollment cap from 360 students to 450 students. The chart highlights an overall summary of findings for the amendment request for Purpose Prep. Purpose Prep was a reward school in 2017 and 2018. Purpose Prep exceeded the financial standard from school years 2013 to 2019 on their charter school performance framework. Purpose Prep currently occupies 12 of the available classrooms. and has the capacity to occupy three additional classrooms, and Purpose Prep provided evidence of stakeholder feedback regarding the amendment requests. The review team determined that the application for the amendment to add grade five to Purpose Prep meets the standard. The review team determined that the application for the amendment request to increase the enrollment cap does not meet the standard for the following. The review team did not find evidence to support the request to increase the enrollment cap for 360 students, which also includes a 5% grace of 378 total students, when Purpose Prep currently has a total of 348 students with one student on the waitlist. The review team noted that a grade level could be added, but no additional seats are needed, and could include the additional grade level and maximum students of 378 with the 5% grace. The review team had questions around why the enrollment numbers indicated in the application would increase in lower grades if fifth grade is being added. And Purpose Prep is currently in year nine of their charter contract. The school can propose an enrollment cap change in their renewal application.
All right, we've heard from Dr. Battle and her team. Do we have a motion for Purpose Prep's amendment?
Madam Chair, just prior to any motion, if the board can take the action that it wants, however, if it were to do in part approval, approve one part and deny one part, for clarity, it should probably be taken as different motions.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right, do we have any motion to begin with? All right, Mrs. Player.
I make a motion to, I make, I make a motion to... Sorry, sorry. I make a motion to accept the amendment to fifth grade for Purpose Prep without, without the enrollment increase.
All right, do we have a second?
Point of order, I think the suggestion was that those be two separate motions. So I think you just keep it very clear. I move to add the, to approve the addition of fifth grade to Purpose Prep.
Yeah, that's why I had the pause. Thank you. So I make the motion to approve the fifth grade amendment to Purpose Prep Academy.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Go right ahead, Mrs. Player Peters.
I kind of go back to Mr. Little's point of what I was discussing, and I'm not saying that to do it, but I just want to clarify for parents, when we define partnership and responsibility, they're two different things. And I just want to clarify that, because when I was having discussions with the parents at the town hall meeting, there was a genuine confusion, particularly when I was explaining my stance. And I just wanted, I wanted to clarify that, because, for example, everybody knows I am pro-union, but I can't force a charter school to enter in a contract with the union. We have MLU with the union, charters do not. So if they were in a true partnership, and we were following the same type of governance, we should be able to dictate whether they have a pro-union aspect or... So that's what I'm saying about the operations. So the operations is decided amongst their private board, that we do not have say-over. If we did, it would be a different conversation. So I just want to clarify what we do have governance and fiduciary responsibility over, and what we do not, because the confusion was, when we consider reimagined, why didn't we automatically consider charter schools in that? And I wanted to try to clarify, what was the responsibility of their board, and their strategic plan, and their planning long-term, and what's our responsibility? And that's what I was trying to clarify, and that... Another first question I have, that when you say partnership, when we had to consolidate four schools, that partnership wasn't reciprocated. If there's gonna be a true partnership, it has to be a two-way street. And so I just want to clarify that what we can do and what we cannot do together, and when we define a partnership, as I try to do, make, to have a genuine reset of the conversation because of the history we've had as a board, and different people's advocacy's and philosophies. And so I just want to have a clear, level-setting aspect. As we move forward, what does that look like? And that was the point of it, is that civics lesson is to understand what's our fiduciary responsibility, what's their board's fiduciary responsibility, what we legally can do, what they legally can do. And I think that's a discussion we need to have, to have a true, genuine discussion of how we educate our kids, period. How we fund the education of our kids. And if we don't level-set that, we can't have the bigger discussions about funding, about education, and about the philosophies. And that's what I wanted to do, is have a thoughtful and telepathic discussions, because parents are smart, but education is a big wonky beast, and you have to have time and information to digest that. And I just want to clarify that, as that's our job, is to educate how the system and process works.
And thank you.
Hold on, you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah. The only thing I gotta say, we gotta watch in history, and thank you for that clarity, because I misunderstood you, but whenever in this world, when you had North Korea, South Korea, East Germany, West Germany, there's always been confusion in what we know about Metro Natural Public Schools. We know some parents have their kids in a charter school, but they can have their other kid in a zone school, and so we just gotta watch how we divide the parents, because it's not an either-or. For parents, they may send their kids to Purpose Prep, but also send their kids to MLK, and so I always want to make sure that we are trusting the parents, because we talk about a lot of parent participation. Some people on social media even talk about what parents need to be doing, and so when you have parents who are very active, engaged, supportive, they have done their research, they have had sit-down meetings, all for their kid, I just think we need to respect it. And I think we just gotta make sure it's not dividing our board. We just gotta accept, if a school is good academically on paper with the rules that we put forth, we should accept it, but also if parents want to send their kids to that school, we should not be getting in the way, and that's all I'm saying.
Mrs. Bush. I just want to make a comment, just so we can make sure that, once again, I keep talking about division and being so divisive when it comes to charter versus traditional. All of our children, these are all MMPS students. I want to make sure that we understand that if a child goes to a charter, if a child goes to a traditional school or a magnet school, they're all of our kids. We have to stop dividing these students up, and it's really pissing me off, so I just want to say that.
Further discussion? Mrs. Elrod.
I think there's a point of clarification that needs to be made, that, one, the the questions that we're answering are not from us as MMPS, they're from the state. So that's, that's an important thing to first understand. I do want to make sure that I clarify a comment from the last. I had misunderstood some of my numbers, and I apologize on the Rocketship. I did think that originally it was some additional seats. So I appreciate that it's not additional seats, and I understand that that's probably the most important thing, that those additional seats are not needed in any of our areas. So in regards to this, I do still feel that fifth grade being added to our schools is a benefit that should first be going to our MMPS reimagined clusters, as they originally are scheduled. Again, in good faith, it would do be no service to do that for other schools before my own schools were prioritized. And so that is why I feel like on a current organizational standard, how we already have it, makes the most sense. However, I do understand that this school is not, if they are adding new seats, I think it is most important that we do not allow any additional new seats, as that is not necessary. And so I appreciate that we're separating those two motions, and I want to make sure I understand the motion that is at hand.
Was there any more discussion before we restate the motion? All right, go ahead, Mrs. Player Peters.
I move that we approve the charter amendment to extend the fifth grade for Purpose Prep Academy.
All right, we had a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, all opposed. All opposed. All right, the motion is passed, we will now move on. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there is a second portion of this amendment. Do we have a motion regarding increasing seats?
I make, I make a motion that we increase the seats at Purpose Prep Academy.
All right, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All right, motion fails. Do we have another motion? Go right ahead, Mrs. Player Peters.
I make a motion that we do not extend the enrollment cap at Purpose Prep Academy.
All right, do we have a second? We have a second. All right, discussion. So, well, actually, I will start the discussion with Purpose Prep, because they are doing phenomenal things in our district. But what I, what I continue to hear from parents, what I have heard around this board table, is that we have got to stop being divisive and treat our charter schools exactly as we treat our MMPS choice schools. We're not adding enrollment to our choice schools. Lachlan is an elementary school in my district, in the Stradford cluster, that's already scheduled to have fifth grade added next year. We're not adding portables, we're not adding any seats. And I did champion for us to increase seats at Purpose Prep three years ago. I think I made the motion for us to increase to make sure that they had that 378. So it's not that I'm opposed or want to keep parents or students out of those schools, but I am trying to make sure that we are moving to a less divisive conversation, that we're talking about students and charter schools as if they truly are MMPS schools like they are. So I do still agree that fifth grade should be in elementary schools. I do still agree that, you know, that it's a best practice, and I appreciate Dr. Battle and her team bringing it to us, but I don't agree in treating them differently than our MMPS schools and adding enrollment, when we're not gonna add them to any other school. We're not gonna add them to Buena Vista, or, I'm sorry, to Jones, so I just want to be mindful of that. Other discussion? Go right ahead, Mr. Little.
I think I just want to say, when you look at, I think Purpose Prep is in the Pearl Cone cluster.
It's in my cluster, yep.
Yep. When you have parents who are trying to bust down the door to get into a school, and then we look at the TN Ready scores, not, not the 2021, but we look at 2019, and you see single digits, you see a school like, I'm not gonna name the school.
Because I would hate for you to be divisive about our MMPS schools, after you just asked us not to be divisive now. I know, I know you're not gonna try to compare, okay?
But I think, but I think overall, when you have a school that parents enjoy, when you have a school that parents are passionate about, and, and again, respect to you, you did pass it a few years ago, like we did for MLK, because those families were coming out saying...
No, we didn't add any for MLK.
For MLK?
Nope.
Okay, I'll look back on that. I think overall, it's hard to deny what a parent wants, and when you look like the high-quality options are not where they need to be yet, and it's growing. Like, we have a good plan, but I think you gotta think about every year that passes, a kid may lose out, like, when we think about...
I'm sorry, you suggesting that every year a child is in an MMPS zone school, that they're missing out?
Every year a child is in a low-performance school academically, based on TN Ready, MAPS scores, WIDA, and it's not meeting the levels that it needs to be to get them from grade to grade? I think they are missing out, and I don't think parents want to wait.
Again, because my son is in the Pearl Cone cluster, and I completely understand my privilege in choosing to go the zone school route, I still suggest that if we're going to be less divisive, we have to maintain that less divisive conversation. We've got to stop pitting parents against one another and suggesting that because one chose and one didn't, that they don't both want what's best, or that their children aren't receiving the best. There are just, there are so many different aspects that impact children and their academic careers, and to suggest that an under-resourced community is, does not need more resources to benefit children would be a disservice to the conversation around education. But, again, we're not gonna be, I'm urging us to not be divisive around this table, and that is where, that is my stance. I will continue to support all of our schools as we have been. Any other discussion? Mrs. Bush?
So, my district is a little different. So we do look at adding seats. Southeast is the fastest-growing, right? So I do have to add seats, so it's gonna be a little bit different, because I am almost pretty much at capacity or either overcapacity, so I'm gonna either be adding to the school buildings, doing renovations, so I'm gonna be actually adding seats. So I just want to make sure that we're clear, so when parents do hear that I, yeah, I'm gonna be... There's a reason why, you know, I have to add those seats, because of a capacity. So I just wanted to make sure we just kind of understood, because that could come up.
Thank you for that nuance, yes. So we are not adding, we are adding seats to zone schools that need it, but we are not adding them to any MMPS choice schools. So again, Lachlan, that has a waitlist over 100 students, where students are, parents are beating down the door, we're not giving them that option to add fifth grade seats, we're just asking them to make the accommodations. So thank you for that clarity. All right, without further discussion, can you restate the motion? Mrs. Player Peters?
I, I make a motion that we do not increase the enrollment capacity of Purpose Prep Academy.
All right, it was moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hands high, so Mrs. Bobo can count. All right, all opposed? We have two opposed. Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. We'll kick it back to Dr. Battle for, Dr. Battle and your team for Smithson Craighead Academy.
We will now move to the next amendment request for Smithson Craighead. Smithson Craighead is requesting to add fifth grade and increase their enrollment cap. The current grade levels are kindergarten through fourth. The amendment request is to add grade five. The current enrollment cap is 250 students. The amendment request is to increase the enrollment cap from 250 students to 360. The chart highlights an overall summary of findings for the amendment request for Smithson Craighead. Smithson Craighead was a reward school in 2018, 2019. Smithson Craighead did not meet the financial standards from school year 2014 to 2017, according to the charter school performance framework. Smithson Craighead's current building is equipped for the additional grade level, and stakeholders provided feedback regarding the amendment request. The review team determined that the application for the amendment to add grade five to Smithson Craighead meets the standard. The review team determined that the application for the amendment to increase the enrollment cap for Smithson Craighead does not meet the standard for the following. The school currently has not reached their maximum enrollment indicated in their original charter of 250 students, and the projection of growth does not support an additional 110 seats. The review team noted that based on current enrollment data and trends for Smithson Craighead, a grade level could be added, but no additional seats are needed due to not currently reaching their enrollment cap. And lastly, there is currently no waitlist for this charter.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor for Smithson Craighead Academy?
Motion to approve that Smithson Craighead, Smith and Craig, Smith, sorry. Motion to approve... To approve fifth grade to Smithson and Craighead Academy.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Go right ahead, Mrs. Maston.
I just want to say, I had a great visit at Smithson Craighead, which is in my district. And I, I was really straightforward, that I'm very appreciative of everything that they're doing in that school, and that I would be glad to vote for them to add fifth grade, but not to add seats. And we, you know, and I discussed some of the nuance around that, which I think we've more than covered here, again, tonight. But I want to speak to, one of the things I actually wanted to mention about them is that they are not heavily advertising, marketing, and recruiting. They are taking in the children in their neighborhood. And I am actually appreciative of that, because I think that some of our charter schools choose to actively recruit and market, knowing that they're going to exceed that threshold, and have very long waitlists, and have to disappoint families that they have marketed to in that way, and then come to us asking for additional seats, instead of following the process and asking for those seats when it's appropriate within the cycle of renewal. So, all that, just to say, I was very appreciative of Smithson Craighead opening their doors to me, and of the Eagle mascot that is here this evening. And, and the way that the school is working to serve families in the community. So, y'all may say I never vote anything yes for a charter, but I'm voting yes for all these fifth grades being added, because that, you know, if that is a pedagogical decision that does not require the addition of seats, I can be understanding of that. I did recommend to them that maybe they get in touch with some, I also looked with all of these, with where these students typically would go to fifth grade, and it very rarely is our zoned community schools. It usually is another charter, or a private school, or sometimes a magnet school. And I recommended, if some of these charters want to add seats, maybe talk with some of the other charter school entities where their children typically go, about letting go of some... some seats so that it's sort of a net zero. Anyway, just trying to think innovatively. That's all.
All right, any further discussion around Smithson, I mean, yes, around Smithson Craighead's addition of fifth grade? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, unanimous with the exception of Ms. Elrod. All right, we have to close the loop with their enrollment. Do we have a motion? Go right ahead, Mrs. Player Peters.
So I make a motion not to increase the enrollment threshold of Smithson Craighead because it does not meet standards.
All right, do we have a second? I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Metro Legal, did you have any? Okay. All right, all in favor of denying the enrollment increase for Smithson Craighead, please raise your hand. All right, all opposed? All right, motion passes. Dr. Battle will move on to Strive Collegiate.
Madam Chair, I apologize. May I make a comment before there's a mass exodus?
Sure.
Or during the mass exodus?
Go right ahead, Dr. Gentry.
So I think I would be remiss if I didn't say a couple of things. And I will be honest, Mr. Little, sometimes I'm concerned with some of your commentary when it comes to you sitting at this board table. There's plenty of charter schools that have boarded their own, and that's their responsibility, is to make the kinds of decisions we're being asked to make today. And I don't, I don't, I don't say, I don't want to say I don't appreciate, it just concerns me that I would be chastised for serving as a board member for MNPS and doing what's best for MNPS. And I do understand and appreciate that those two things are not mutually exclusive, that I can make decisions that are in the best interests of the schools, the charter schools, and I think we're doing that now. But I just, I don't, I don't, I'm concerned when the tongue-lashing comes about my behavior as an MNPS board member. The other comment that keeps being made here is that charter schools are MNPS schools. And so for those of you who remain, I want to be very clear, charter schools are not MNPS schools. They're public schools, but they're not MNPS schools. If you were MNPS schools, we would be your board, and we're not. So, you know, a whole bunch of quippy comments come to mind, you know, they want our rhythm but not our blues. And I think about the Botham Jean case, literally, when his son, his brother forgave that woman for walking into his apartment and shooting him, walked up and gave her a hug. And that, as a race of people, and this is why it made me think of this, I'm always frustrated that we're always expected to be the ones forgiving. We're always expecting to, the ones to excuse the behavior. And sometimes in this situation, I'm always feel like we're expected as MNPS to be the bigger person, to ignore the position the state has put us in, to ignore how dismissive the state has been about my authority to lead my schools, that how condescending the state has continued to be to us, to our schools, and to our director about her ability to make decisions that are best for our schools, about her ability to ask for what we need to do what's best for our schools and our students. And that's what I feel like. I feel like every time a vote comes here that ends up looking like it's divisive and we're splitting schools is because sometimes I just don't want to be the one bigger person. And you're right, it should be about the kids, but those are not MNPS kids. And I just want us to be clear about that. We do have the ability to make decisions that benefit them, and just at this moment, when we have the opportunity to do that, we're doing it today. And so we know what our job is, and we're very capable of doing our job. And so it's the rhetoric that comes out of a lot of different mouths that's divisive, not just the decisions that we have to make, okay? So we just, I would just caution us that sometimes we do talk out of both sides of our neck at this table, that we say that these are MNPS schools and we're supposed to treat them as MNPS schools, but it's like having that jacket where you zip it and sometimes it skips teeth. We're not connected all the way through. We're not connected at the points of impact, at every point of impact. We're only connected when it's convenient. We only line up when it's beneficial. And so that's not fair to us. Not your fault, not my fault, not our fault, it's the position we've been put in. So I would just ask that you consider, that everyone consider, that when we're making decisions at this table, I'm sitting here as a person who was a vote, and granted, there have been a whole lot of charter parents that's voted for every last one of us here, but know what you're voting for. You're voting for someone who's going to sit here and make decisions on behalf and for what's best for MNPS schools. That's what you're voting for. Now, I would also encourage that the way you pile into this boardroom, pile into those charter board meetings. Pile in. Make sure they're talking about the long-term strategy for your kids. Because like it or not, that's really not our responsibility.
Yes.
It's not what we got elected to do. That's not what we have the capacity to do.
We're not allowed.
And we're not allowed to do it. You have a board, pile into those meetings, know what their agenda is, know when and where they meet. Show up at those meetings and demand that they are having long-term strategic discussions about the things that are going to impact your kids. Because trust me, the first Tuesday of every month, we get in here full. And you have the right to do the same thing with the boards for your schools, and I suggest that you exercise that right. They owe it to you. They owe it to you because you're right, then Mr. Little is spot on. You made the choice. You chose that governance model because this wasn't the governance model that was working for you and your family, and you had the right to do that. You chose a different governance model. So lean into that governance model. Lean into those individuals who are sitting around tables making decisions as often as they meet about your kids.
Yeah. And Dr. Gentry, you are amazing, and I have so much respect. I don't want you to look at me with the side eye. Today, I spent four of my hours at our high school in the cluster, working with teachers, working with students. I spent my phone time on the way over here, working with an elementary school student after they came to my community meeting that was 100% of parents in traditional schools. But I also spent a lot of my time tonight listening to these parents because what I'm going to continue to say, I don't see a different shirt, I don't see a different color, this is not Bloods, these are not Crips, these are people. And the reason I'm so passionate, I'm passionate about everything. I'm passionate about public charter schools, I'm passionate about magnet schools, I'm passionate about our traditional schools because our kids need it. And in education in this city, in this country, for Black, Brown, and Poor people, we have not realized that dream. It just hasn't happened with the data I see, with how we're incarcerated, with our homeless rate, with our death rate. And so the reason I sit up here and speak, and I appreciate being elected to this board because I want the least of them to have a voice. It's so easy to sit up here and thumb our finger at people and tell them what they should be doing and where they should be going, but it's even harder to get right into the community and know that our community is suffering every single day, every single decade, and not do anything about it. And so I make no apologies, although I respect everybody, I just don't make apologies for my passion because I can give you my references for anybody, and it doesn't matter to school. So I appreciate, you know, I respect you, I listen to you, but I just, sometimes you got to agree to disagree.
Thank you for that, Dr. Gentry and Mr. Little. And I will say, as the parent of a zone school student who's in a school with a transency rate of 72%, even pre-pandemic, there's never a time when I can get all of Jones or even the handful of charter school parents that we got here today, there's no time when I could get Jones' parents here, not because they don't love their kids, they don't want what's best for their kids. There are different, there are different generational and systemic issues that are impacting, yes, Black and Brown and Poor communities. And so many of my neighbors, I live in that 37208 area, many of my neighbors are struggling to survive, let alone to thrive. And so I don't want us to ever think that because we hear from what they seem like a loud majority, I don't want us to forget that we are still ignoring the actual majority. There are still so many tens of thousands of parents that we'll never hear from, and that doesn't mean that we should not consider their choices, their children, what happens in their lives important. And I don't want us to ever, ever accept the notion from the community that schools are the problem. Schools are where community issues bubble up. If a community is under-resourced, if parents and families have not had resources for generations, if they've been turned away from opportunities, if they have not been supported, then those are systemic and generational. That, again, I say all the time, 30% of our babies come into first grade already one grade level behind before they even get to MNPS. When you look at the Pearl Cone Cluster, that's upwards of something like 60%. That means that my three-year-old, my neighbor's three- and five-year-olds, the lady across the street, the lady in the apartments, the lady in Chute and Play, these are my community members, they have been under-resourced, and they are showing up to MNPS, bringing the best version of a child that they have, their pride and joy, and we are doing everything we can to wrap our arms around them. But that does not mean that because a school has low test scores, that those students are not smart, or that hard work is not being poured into them, or that teachers aren't good. And I just, we continue to have conversations that, yes, are divisive in a way that they don't have to be. We continue to talk negatively about schools without addressing whole community issues. And that will always be the case, and teachers, potential teachers will continue to run from the profession if we continue to act as though schools are the only place where we need to do better. We need to be doing better in our communities. We need to be making sure that we understand that choice is not a choice for everyone. I guarantee you, my good sis who lives just a couple of doors down from me that has six children that struggles to get her kids to school, I guarantee you, she won't ever choose anything else because I flat out asked her. She said, I didn't know I had a choice. I'm just excited to be able to get my baby into MNPS or into school so that he can learn something. I appreciate the passion, but I do agree that sometimes the passion can be misdirected at schools versus entire systems that have let community members of color and poverty that are differently abled down. And I think in this conversation around MNPS district-run schools and charter schools still continues to miss the mark around under-resourcing, consistent underfunding, and then the devaluing of education. We don't talk about public education in a way that says, every child deserves more money, every parent deserves more access, every family deserves better resources. We still continue to pit people against each other, and it's, I'm going to continue to take offense to it as a Pearl Cone parent, I will. I will continue to take offense to suggesting that the other parents whose children are in the classroom with Christopher are not doing the best that they can, or that Mrs. Pringle, who has already got my baby up to, ready to be in kindergarten, or ready to be in first grade, that she isn't doing phenomenal, or that Mrs. Taylor at Jones is not, has not moved that school from a one, two, a three, and will soon be a five. Like, I will take offense to that. I do, again, I suggest that fifth grade is, this is a great pedagogical suggestion, this is a best practice for kids, but let's not continue to talk about parents who are in zone schools as if those zone schools are doing harm to children when they are doing the best with the little bit of resources that we're given.
Yeah, just to be clear, because it's getting late, I'm supporting every family. And so in my work, I work with priority school parents. And so every day, I work with these parents, I sit in their living rooms, I see their kids to school, I go to community centers, and so I just want to be clear, I don't, I don't need the conversation around the schools. I don't think it's the schools. Teachers, they have a job to do, but it comes from a system. And so I'm up here on the school board representing the system, and I'm going to continue to speak out because this is the system, it's not the schools. So that's why I speak out for what I do.
And I will say that as board members, we can speak, we also can take action. There are some things that, it might be that Dr. Sevier can better support you in taking some action so that you don't feel like you just have to speak, but that you can start to help to better develop strategic plans or better support or ask questions around next steps for some of these priority schools because I can't seem to get much engagement or support around 37208 outside of MNPS. So I would appreciate any...
I just told you, I walk the halls today.
Of 37208?
No, McGavick in my dish.
All right. We'll go ahead, Mrs. Sharika Roby Grant, or Dr. Roby Grant with Strive Academy.
We have reached our last amendment request. We will now review the amendment request for Strive Collegiate. Strive is requesting the removal of fifth grade.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
The current grade levels are five through eight. The amendment request is to remove grade five. The chart highlights an overall summary of findings for the amendment request for Strive. Strive met the overall academic performance standard in 2017, 2018 according to the Charter School Performance Framework. However, Strive received the Targeted Support and Improvement Designation in 2018, 2019. The 2020 audited financials have no findings. Reducing the grade level would not require changes to the current physical space, and stakeholders provided feedback regarding the requested amendment. The review team determined that the application for the amendment to remove fifth grade from Strive meets the standard.
All right, thank you for that. Do we have a motion around Strive Academy?
Move the approval of removal of fifth grade from Strive Academy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous?
Right.
All right, Dr. Roby Grant, please go ahead with Lead Prep Southeast.
We will now transition to the review of the renewal applications for Lead Prep Southeast and Knowledge Middle School. TCA sets forth the procedures by which a charter school may renew its charter agreement with its authorizer. A charter school must submit a renewal application to its authorizer no later than April 1st of the year prior to the year in which its charter agreement expires. The board will review two charter renewal requests. Upon your review and discussion, the board options are as follows. Approve or deny the renewal request for both Lead Prep Southeast and Knowledge Middle School. If denied, a charter school has the option to appeal the decision. Each of the sections within the renewal application were rated by the review team members as follows. Meets the standard. The record includes specific and accurate evidence that the school generally demonstrated success in meeting and upholding the terms of the charter agreement. Partially meets the standard. The record meets the criteria in some aspects, but lacks sufficient evidence that the charter school is meeting the terms of the charter agreement in one or more areas. And does not meet the standard. The record provides evidence that the charter school committed a violation of its charter agreement or failed to meet generally accepted standards of fiscal management. We will now review the renewal request for Lead Prep Southeast. The chart highlights an overall summary of findings for the renewal application for Lead Prep Southeast. Lead Prep Southeast has been a Level 5 school in ELA in school years 2017 to 2019, in math from school years 2018 to 2019, in science from school year 2017 to 2018, and social studies from school years 2018 to 2019. Lead Prep was a reward school for academic growth in 2014, 2015, and 2016, 2017. The Tennessee Department of Education and Comptroller's report have not indicated any findings, and the school included a plan to expand EL programming, intervention plans, curriculum, and support for students with disability. After a thorough review of the renewal application, the review team rated the overall findings as follows. Meets the standards in academics, meets the standards in operational stability, meets the standards in financial health, and meets the standards in future planning. I will now turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the renewal request for Lead Prep Southeast.
All right, do we have a motion for Lead Prep's renewal application?
I make a motion to approve the renewal of Lead Prep Southeast's application.
All right, do we have a second? We have a first and a motion and a second by Dr. Gentry. Any discussion? Mrs. Elrod?
I have a question about their 100% graduation seniors being accepted into a four-year college or university. So I'm hoping that we have the answers for it. If they have a... If, if they have a student that is not wanting to do college, what happens? Is that student not allowed to be a student anymore? Particularly because the materials said that they lacked evidence in their credit recovery materials. So what happens to that student?
So page four of their application indicated that they prepare students for what happens beyond graduation so they can pursue their goals and thrive. So it encompasses an opportunity in a four-year university as well as any post-secondary opportunities. And this was on page four of the report.
Yes, I saw that. It focuses, again, on the college and university aspect of it, which, as we know, is not necessarily a best practice for all students and is frankly kind of the antithesis of what we're trying to do right now at MNPS. So I was curious of like what other options they had besides that they just strive for it. And so it sounds like we may not have that information.
We can only share the findings within the report. And so the information that was actually included in the application, if it wasn't included in the report, we were not permitted to discuss those details.
Okay. I mean, I know, again, as said earlier, that the report is not of our own creation, but the state's creation. You know, as I said, I have a concern about their 100% grad seniors having to be accepted to a four-year college because it sends a message that only college or university is the only option for after high school. And we all know that to not be true is not a best practice. And in fact, that doesn't fit like what we're trying to do with every student known right now with MNPS. And then it also would bring a concern to me about do they have a lower number of students with disabilities or a lower number of EL students because of those application requirements or needs? So in the future report, we used to be able to receive enrollment breakdowns along with fiscal information. Are we going to be able to receive that in the future? You can or you can't, I'm so sorry.
We can provide the information in the future.
Okay, that would be great. Because I saw in the notes that it stated that the plans lacked specific, excuse me, they were not specific, for the need of EL teachers, intervention plans, and students with disability supports. So that just added to my concern that that's the priority for them. That, once again, all those students need to 100% go to a four-year university or at least be accepted to one, when there are definitely some students that are going to struggle with that. And in particular, when it's also in the materials that there's insufficient evidence on how to improve certain math scores and credit recovery plans. So Lead, I understand that their T-VAS scores are, you know, fine and that they've been a reward school twice. You know, I'm consistent with my belief of if you're a charter school, you need to be exceptional. That's the reason for your creation and the beginning of what a charter school's supposed to be, particularly after you've been here for 10 years. So I believe that it should be exceptional as well and that you should definitely be better than MNPS if that's what you're stating that you're going to do as a charter. So it is concerning, again, that their students are starting to be on track for TN Ready and that there's been finally some consistent increase in the ELA scores over the last three years. But the insufficient evidence for integrated math and credit recovery plans was concerning. It looked like the committee asked for some of that additional information. Did they ask that information from the school or did they simply put that in the report?
Excuse me, included in the report that they would have liked to see additional information.
Does that mean that y'all actually get to see that information or is it just a, we would like to see it?
We would have liked to for it to have been included in the report, in their application.
Okay. I would agree. I would have liked to have seen that as well. Okay, thank you at this time.
Any further discussion? Or Mrs. Bush?
Yes, I would definitely support Lead Southeast. They are an exceptional school that provides so many great services to the children. I've been there to visit and have always been impressed. And I'm even more impressed that even during the pandemic, they have been able to sustain. And so I've been very impressed on the type of work they put into even being at home, virtual, and now I'm back in person. But I have been extremely very happy with the work they're doing. And the staff is amazing and they continue to grow every day. So I will be supporting Lead. So yes, thank you.
All right, go right ahead, Mrs. Elrod.
I apologize. There was one other question or one other piece of information that used to be included in our reports, and that was the enrollment information of not just a breakdown of students, but also the schools that they attended or recruited from. Do we have that information for the school? I assume they're coming from the Cambridge cluster, but I don't want to assume that.
Ms. Elrod, I'll jump up with Dr. Griffin being out. I've been supporting Sharika in this process. We don't have that information right now. I think if we want to talk about what additional information we may want in the future, that'd be a conversation to have with Dr. Battle. So we do not have it for this report, but if that's something that the board would want in the future, that is a conversation to have with Dr. Battle about, again, the information the board is looking to receive.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going to sit with that for a second. So I, I was hoping to know what schools they are as we've had a decrease in enrollment across the board, though frankly, as Fran has mentioned and rightfully so. Her area in southeast Nashville has a tremendous increase of people. We just have a lot of people moving in our area. But I know that we have the new Cambridge Middle School being built. And looking through the Cambridge numbers, the only school that was at capacity or above it was Cambridge High from the 20-day mark. So I didn't, again, I didn't know if these, these seats were needed and where they were recruiting from. So yes, I would like that information in future reports again. And I will follow up on that.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Robersch and Mrs. Roby Grant. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion. Could you restate the motion, please?
Motion, I make the motion to approve Southeast, no, Lead Southeast, correct, renewal application.
All right, we had a second from Dr. Gentry. All in favor, please raise your hand. Hold them up high if you don't mind just so we can count. All right. All opposed to renewing Lead Prep Southeast charter renewal. Okay, we have one. All abstaining? We have one abstaining. All right. Now we will move on to Knowledge Middle School.
Motion, motion to defer one meeting, please.
All right, we have a motion without the presentation from Mrs. Player Peters to defer for one meeting.
Time?
Yeah, November 30.
And I'm sorry, we're calling up Metro Legal to understand if we have time for, to defer.
I'm sorry, yes. There is time for the board to defer a meeting.
When is that deadline? I mean, is it before the end of the year or is it sometime in the spring?
February 1st.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion, a second? All right, any discussion around Knowledge Academies?
Tell me why you would want to defer it.
We've had a question about why Mrs. Player Peters would like to defer the conversation or the vote around Knowledge Middle School.
I, we, Metro Legal, someone can help me from the administration, but we received information, I think, that will help us have a better discussion in the future.
Yeah, I believe Knowledge Academy has reached out with additional proposal that needs to be analyzed by MNPS.
Is that typical? I thought that they only, if we deny, then they can come back and address those questions, not before we vote. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the process is. Are they allowed to do that once they've already been judged?
Just to create an entire party up here. They have reached out with discussions about their entire network and based on sort of their representations. We thought that that was worth evaluating and we'll be presenting those to the board. We're just not prepared to do so tonight.
Is this something that, that, I guess, if we're following our own structure of the way that we do this, is this something that would be considered a one-off or is this something that you're going to expect every time we have a charter school who does not meet standards that they will last minute contact you? I just don't want this to be a...
I do think it's a one-off. And again, it's not because they don't meet the standards that this additional information came forward.
I'm nosy, but I'm going to let y'all be. I can wait, too. I definitely, I can't wait to this next meeting then to understand what's happening. All right, so we had a motion and a second to defer until the first meeting in December. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? And then, do we have an abstention? Mrs. Elrod, can you hear me?
I could not hear that motion, I'm sorry. I was trying to figure that out, I'm so sorry. Will you please repeat it? I couldn't figure out how to motion to you.
So Mrs. Player Peters made a motion to defer the conversation and the vote around Knowledge Academy till the next meeting. We had staff come up and tell us that they don't...
I apologize.
Okay, so we, and we just voted. One more time, just for the record, to make sure that media and our staff can see. All in favor of deferring till the first meeting in December. All right. All opposed to the, to the deferral? All right, we have three opposed. All right. That concludes, thank you, Mrs. Roby Grant. We'll move on. We'll move on to announcements. With that, we'll begin with Aben Nezer. I'm sorry, before, Dr. Gentry, did you have any before you? Okay, thank you. Have a happy holiday. Go right ahead, Aben Nezer.
I only had one announcement. I would just like to tell all eighth graders that Vanderbilt has a program called SSMV, which they invite eighth graders or rising high schoolers to come once a week to somewhere near Vanderbilt's campus.
On Vanderbilt's campus.
Yeah, it's very beautiful and they have wonderful teachers. And basically, students get to explore topics in STEM, so most likely going to be in STEM. And they do projects, laboratories, and it's a great way to learn. I used to be part of that project. And applications are open this week, so I encourage all eighth graders to try out and to, to see if this is something that they want to explore. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that, Aben Nezer. All right, Mrs. Bush?
Yes, just wanted to, our prayers, or my prayers go out to the, I know we had two of our buses. I know one was a charter bus and one of our MNPS buses were in accidents this past week. And we know that we had two fatalities. And I just want to make sure, you know, I, we recognize those families that unfortunately during this holiday season is so unfortunate in my heart and prayers, and I'm sure all of us around this table can say that we'll be praying for those families. And everybody have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Yep, first I would say tighten up. We gotta, we gotta bounce back. But more seriously, just reporting now from the parent meeting had good representation in the McGavick cluster from our elementary, middle, and our high schools and looking forward to reconvening in the new year.
All right, Mrs. Elrod?
Yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to announce at Overton that Ms. Meredith McGinnis has been named the 2022 Teacher of the Year at Overton. Ms. McGinnis teaches the AVID Global Perspectives and College Prep PLT at Overton. So she wears so many hats. So I am very glad and has a tremendous responsibility with those programs. So I really appreciate her hard work for all of our Bobcats and am proud to have her in District 2. Additionally, I wanted to just tell everybody to have a safe Thanksgiving. We'll see y'all in December. And yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Player Peters?
Mr. Hale wonderfully stole my thunder with the Math and Science, but he did a better job because he actually went through the program. I just visited once, so that was, I think, so I'm glad it actually came from him and not from me. And happy Thanksgiving or happy day off and eat well and don't eat too much. We'll eat too much, but then walk it off.
All right, Mrs. Masters?
I just want to say that I, because I had to be here at 5 o'clock today, I missed the dedication of the Doris Court at Goodlettsville Middle. The basketball court there has been named in honor of Coach Tony Doris, a very beloved part of the Goodlettsville Middle School family for many years, who passed away last year. And I just, I just wanted to thank our Facilities Division, David Prophet, and everyone at the school, and all of the advocates for all the hard work to make sure that that happened and that the school is able to offer that dedication. I also wanted to thank Eric Warfield, the Vice President of USW Local 9426, our School Bus Drivers Union. We had a really great conversation last week, just sort of talking through what drivers are facing right now, what sort of things could be done to help, help hang on to the bus drivers we have, recruit new bus drivers, and just get at this issue, which is not just an MNPS issue, is a, you know, statewide, nationwide issue around just making sure that we have that safe and reliable transportation. I'm so appreciative of the partnership with our unions when it comes to understanding what is faced by employees. And I'm looking forward to moving forward as a board member to help get at what needs to be done to tackle that issue. And then, of course, once again, I want to thank the members of the Parent Advisory Council for putting on another town hall. I mean, I just think the PAC is such an amazing representation of what can happen when schools and school leaders and parents work together, not always agreeing, but having open, transparent conversations and trying to help one another, I mean, as evidenced by parents having input on the work on the student dashboard. So I know it may not make for the most sensational headlines, the most exciting work around what some parents are doing to advocate, but it is some of the most effective work that I personally have seen from my position on the board, and I'm incredibly appreciative of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler?
I just want to shout out HG Hill Middle School. They are the MNPS middle school football champs for the first time in their history. I'm so proud of them. They did a great job. They certainly earned that. And not just the football team, their cheerleader team has been supportive of them this whole time and the parents. And it was just really great to see everybody come out to support them last Thursday. So congratulations, HG Hill. And then also, I just wanted to take a minute and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and let our bus drivers and our teachers and support staff know that we hear you when you tell us that you're drowning and that we hear you when you tell us that you are overwhelmed and that you don't need more on your plate, but that you need a way to breathe and that you need a way to reach your kids and the students that you serve that will be the most effective. And so I just, I want to assure you that we hear you, I hear you, and I am in talks with Dr. Battle and with other board members, and we are trying to find solutions that is something that we can sustain at MNPS and will be helpful for you. So please feel free to continue to contact me. I know some of you already have been. You may always email or call or contact your MNEA rep as well, as that's another way to get your voice heard. So just take this time to rest. Thank you for what you've done and take a true break. Don't take any work home with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Anjali?
I just wanted to echo on what Ms. Tyler said. Congratulations to the MNPS Middle School Football 2021 seed championships, to HG Hill Middle, my former middle school, so go Panthers. Rising juniors and seniors, if you're interested in attending one of the Tennessee Governor's School this summer, visit tn.gov. As someone who attended the Tennessee Governor's School for International Studies this past summer, I highly encourage anyone who is interested to please apply. Deadlines are from the timeframe early December to mid-January. And as tomorrow is Thanksgiving break, I just wanted to extend a thank you to the board members, Dr. Battle, teachers, and support staff throughout the district for all that you do for our schools and for the students. I hope everyone has a great break. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I will say we recently had a Tennessee School Board Association Leadership Conference. Thank you, Mrs. Pupo Walker and Mrs. Masters for attending, sitting in there, asking questions of our legislators. I was there for the board chairman's conversation, and I think, I think the board chairs from across the state were about to band together to really advocate. It was a great conversation and I just appreciate you for y'all being there and asking questions of our legislators. I also had the pleasure of sitting with Mrs. Tyler yesterday at Hume Fog. MLK to the day I die, but we, she's an alum of Hume Fog, and we were able to actually speak with students. So it's always just beneficial to hear as many perspectives as possible and to engage the community in a way that puts more information out there. I also want to just thank Mrs. Tyler for her commitment to that naming committee, she and Mrs. Elrod, all the work they did to try to make sure that we were as inclusive and as thoughtful with stakeholder feedback and that this was a board-level decision that neither one of them were able to make by themselves. We had to do it together. And then there will be a Teaching and Learning Committee meeting coming up in two weeks.
December 14.
December 14th, so please feel free to not only look out for that agenda, but to come to that meeting if you have questions. And then I want to give a shout out to Dr. Berthina Nabab McKenney, who has been added as the...
Elrod's sign isn't...
I'm sorry, say it again?
Elrod's sign's in picture.
Sorry.
Beautiful redhead.
Dr. Berthina Nabab McKenney, I think she's one of two, or maybe she's the only MNPS or Davidson County parent that's sitting on the feedback committee to offer feedback to the BEP committee. She's let us know that they will be having a survey coming up. This is a time for us to offer suggestions, ideas around the BEP formula and how it might be restructured. So be on the lookout for that and please be paying attention to any meetings. When we talk about the state, the state is not just one entity. Yes, you have a governor, you have a state house, you have a senate, but you also have a Department of Education, you have a school, I mean, a state board. There's many different moving parts and we need to always be aware of all the different things happening around education, especially at the state level. With that, thank you all. Have a good night. Be there, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.